And if you have a couple of questions on my page or Denver, bless them all that we're just gonna sign it. Yeah, and I'll just send you all of your stuff?
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Whitehall City Council meeting Wednesday, November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. If you would please, we would like to start with a moment of silence. Please for moment of silence and the pledge allegiance. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Og, would you please take a roll call?
Heck.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Harcourt.
Present.
Dixon.
Here.
Brown.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
President Potter.
I would like a motion to excuse the absent member.
Someone.
A second.
Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. The absent member has been excused. Now have approval of minutes, October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four, agenda and regular meeting minutes, October twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four, agenda and committee meeting minutes.
President Protem, I would like to move to to adopt the approval of minutes.
A second.
Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Excuse me. Would now move to next to the standing committee reports met on October twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four. First up is Administration and Financial Management Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, President Protem. Administration and Financial Management met. We have several pieces of legislation on the agenda this evening. Our minutes are on file and we will meet again next Tuesday.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Community and Elder Advocate Chairperson Harcourt.
Yes, thank you. We met on October twenty-second. We have no drafts or pending legislation this evening. We will meet again next week sometime after six-thirty.
Thank you. Next, we have Community Standards and Enforcement Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Protem. Community Standards and Enforcement also met two weeks ago. Our minutes are on file and we will meet again next week.
Thank you. Next, we have Economic Development Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Protem. We also met two weeks ago. We have a couple pieces of legislation on tonight's agenda and we plan to meet next week around this time in these chambers.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Infrastructure Maintenance and Services Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Protem. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. Our minutes are on file and we plan to meet again next Tuesday at six-thirty.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Safety. Public Safety also met last week. Our minutes are on file and we will meet again next week sometime after six-thirty. Next, we have Park and Recreation Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, President Protem. Parks and Recreation met on October twenty-second. Our minutes are on file. We have one piece of legislation on the agenda tonight. It is going on first reading, ordinance number ninety-five, two thousand and twenty-four, and it was discussed during the agenda meeting. We will meet again sometime after six-thirty. This coming Tuesday.
All right, thank you. Next, we move to officials' reports. Mayor Bubins is not present, so we will move to City Attorney, Mr. McAdemas.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. Just a quick report tonight. Earlier this week, we welcomed Crystal Teemer to the City Attorney's Office as our victim advocate. My apologies to my friends in Columbus for poaching her, but she spent a number of years with their victim advocates and so she was able to transition right in, already knew a lot of our team, already knew the workings downtown, so she was able to really hit the ground running, which will help us as we start to move forward with other things for that position to do and help out as well as do some things in the community. So she's been here a couple days, but like I said, hit the ground running. Other thing, working with the mayor and his team for the budget, looking forward to being able to give council a little presentation as to what the City Attorney's Office has been doing and with the budget, so I appreciate that. And then just one last thing. I know a couple of members of council have tried to call over the past couple weeks. Our phones sometimes ring, sometimes they pick up with the voicemail. We are in the middle of an office move, so our phones are still in the old building and our office is not quite put together in the basement of this building at this time, so there's no one to answer phones. If the voicemail picks up, it does email whoever you're trying to reach if you hit our extension, so we'll get back to you, but if you are calling and trying to get someone immediately, it probably won't happen. If you need something quickly, just probably use my cell phone for the next couple of weeks until all that gets done. And with that, there's no questions. I will be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is City Auditor, Mr. Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, we, as Brad mentioned, all of the department heads and I have been feverishly working on putting the budget together. Wanted to let you know we are using a new budget tool this year. It's called ClearGov. It's pretty fancy and it's got a lot of bells and whistles on it, but we've only been using it for about a month and a couple of weeks. So where it has the capability of publishing a budget book, we are not going to be doing that this year because we don't know enough about it and how it all works and we've played around with it some and it it looks kind of cool, but we're going to use the same format from last year as far as the published appearance of the budget and with any luck, we will become expert in this software so that this time next year, we'll be able to use the the budget book that's embedded in this software. So and it's 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 a whole lot prettier. Other than that, I would ask for your favorable consideration on ordinances ninety-four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and one hundred and resolution thirty, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, sir. Next is Director of Public Services, Casey Robles.
Thank you, President Protem. I don't have much time. I just wanted to give a shout out to everyone that made the Fall Forward event a success and everyone that came. It was really cool to see our community come together. The the van unveiling was very neat, so kudos to everyone there. I won't piggyback, but I will piggyback a little bit. Looking forward to budget. You guys will have that in your hands by noon on Friday, so you'll have the weekend to look over that and it will be presented by the mayor next week. So you guys will see that, I think. Oh, I was just talking to Chairperson Smith. We are working on our new trash contract. So our trash contract is coming up for renewal here in January. So I've been working with Swaco and our Eastman and Smith, who does our contract for our bidding. So if there's anybody out there that has any comments, questions, concerns, please reach out to me. I want to take all of that into consideration moving into our next bid. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Director of Public Safety, Van Grant. He is not present. And next is Treasurer Shaquille Alexander, who is not present. Next is the following officials' reports have been filed in City Council office since the last meeting. A, the Auditor's Financial Report from September, two thousand and twenty-four. B, the Treasurer's Financial Reports Reports from August and September, two thousand and twenty-four. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have one, BCBA meeting minutes for October fourteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Two is BCBA meet meeting agenda for November four, two thousand and twenty-four. Three is Whitehall Planning Commission Agenda and for November seven, two thousand and twenty-four. Four is Whitehall Planning Commission Minutes for October three, two thousand and twenty-four. Next on the agenda is our first poll public. Anyone having anything to say, they come forward. They have three minutes to address council and the community and to sign in and state your name. No one there?
I'd like to.
Yeah, sign in, sign your ad, put your address and then just state your name, sir.
Okay, my name is Tony Cooper. I'm with the Fork River, I think.
Yes, sir.
I'm on Briarwood, that area. I'm also a member of the Whitehall Civic Association, the WCCA. Recently, I met Larry at the annual Halloween get-together at the school, Whitehall High School. We cooked hot dogs and went down to the middle school. Anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself. Not new to the town, but I've been here for about ten years or so. This is my second time living in Whitehall. And I always found that Whitehall to me was always a nice place to live. It's changed a little bit over the years, so I'm not feeling bad, but for the most part, I still enjoy living here. But I just wanted to introduce myself. I wasn't writing up. I learned it two months later, so I thought there'd be a lot more. I was just shocked to come in.
Now you see why I wanted to get in. The lady in the back is here almost every week and now we have two people.
Well, thank you. We shouldn't get involved in any of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have verification of copies. Ms. Og, would you roll call whether each member of, excuse me, the people, this of the city, I wish to start it again, whether each member of the council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Thank you. Now we will move to third reading. We have one piece of legislation on third reading. It's Resolution twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four. It's approving the recommendations of the City of Whitehall Tax Incentive Review Council for tax year two thousand and twenty-three.
Mr. President Protem, I would like to introduce and move to adopt Resolution twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All right, thank you. Resolution twenty, twenty, twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four has been introduced by Mr. Dixon and Ms. Smith. Ms. Og, would you please do a roll call?
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
I abstain.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Resolution twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four has passed. We will move to second reading. Ordinance number eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four has been drawn by applicable. Then we move on to second reading. And this is ordinance ninety, two thousand and twenty-four. Will be read by title only. Special Presentation eleven, twelve, two thousand and twenty-four, public hearing eleven, nineteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Allow special permit under eleven, twenty-five point oh four to allow vehicle and large equipment repair and light industrial use on the property located at forty-eleven East Main Street, parcel number zero-nine-zero, zero-zero, five-eight-two-nine, property owned by Howe Investment Properties LLC and declaring an emergency. That's title only. Next second reading is title only as well. It is Ordinance ninety-one, two thousand and twenty-four, authorizing and approving an amendment to the codified ordinance of the City of Whitehall, one sixty-one table of authorization, authorized people and declaring an emergency. That is also title only. Next one is Resolution twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four, title only. Repealing, repealing Resolution twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three and authorizing the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Ethiopian
Talavito.
Talavito Social Services, E T T S. That is by title only. Thank you. Move on now to first readings. We have Ordinance ninety-three, two thousand and twenty-four, title only, authorizing the creation of the OWDA Improvement Fund three twenty-five, appropriating five thousand dollars from unappropriated monies. Sorry about that. Five million dollars. That's off a couple zeros. I will start it again. Authorizing the creation of the OWDA Improvement Fund three twenty-five, appropriating five million dollars from unappropriated monies in the OWDA Improvement Fund three twenty-five to the two thousand and twenty-four Whitehall Water Main Improvement Project Expense Account three twenty-five, oh-oh-oh, fifty thousand and declaring an emergency. That is title only. Next, we move to Ordinance ninety-four, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the first reading, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of eighty thousand, seven hundred, twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents from unappropriated monies in the Streetscape Project Fund three oh seven to the service fund four oh one and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Protem, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-four, two thousand and twenty-four, and move for suspension of all rules.
A second.
Ordinance ninety-four, two thousand and twenty-four has been introduced and asked for suspension of the rules by Councilman Elmore and seconded by Councilman Brown. Ms. Og, would you please call the roll?
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
President Protem moved to adopt.
A second.
Ordinance ninety-four, two thousand and twenty-four has been moved for adoption by Councilman Elmore and seconded by Mr. Brown. Ms. Og, would you please call the roll?
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Now we move to ordinance number ninety-five, two thousand and twenty-four. It's the first reading, approving and making supplemental appropriation in five thousand dollars from previous unappropriated monies in the Columbus Blue Jacket Grant Fund two oh four to the Columbus Blue Jacket Grant Fund Expense Account two oh four, oh-oh-oh, fifty thousand and declaring an emergency.
President Protem, I would like to introduce ordinance number ninety-five, two thousand and twenty-four, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance ninety-five, two thousand and twenty-four has been introduced and with suspension of the rules by Councilman Heck and seconded by Councilman Smith. Ms. Og, would you call the roll, please?
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Moved to adopt. Second.
Ordinance ninety-five, two thousand and twenty-four has been moved to adoption by Ms. Heck and seconded by Councilman Smith. Is there any comments or questions? Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Ordinance ninety-five, two thousand and twenty-four is adopted. Next, we have Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand and twenty-four, authorizing and approving the supplemental appropriation in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in general fund to the Wellness Expense Account one oh one, nine hundred, fifty-one thousand seventeen and declaring an emergency.
President Protem, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand and twenty-four, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand and twenty-four has been introduced by Councilman Elmore and seconded by Councilman Smith with the suspension of the rules. Any questions or comments? Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
President Protem would like to move for adoption.
Second.
Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand and twenty-four has been moved for adoption by Councilman Elmore, seconded by Ms. Smith. Ms. Og, would you please call the roll?
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand and twenty-four has been adopted. Next is Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand and twenty-four, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of six thousand, five hundred dollars from unappropriated funds in the general fund to the unemployment compensation expense account one oh one, nine hundred, fifty-one thousand eleven and declaring an emergency.
President Protem, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand and twenty-four, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand and twenty-four has been introduced for suspension of rules by Councilman Elmore and seconded by Mr. Brown. Any comments or questions? Ms. Og, would you please call the roll?
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
President Protem, I move to adopt.
A second.
Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand and twenty-four has been moved for adoption by Councilman Elmore, seconded by Councilman Brown. Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand and twenty-four has been adopted. Next, we have Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand and twenty-four, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred, ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents from unappropriated monies in the Evidence Set Side Fund two forty-five to the Law Enforcement Trust Fund two forty-one and making a supplemental appropriation of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents from unappropriated funds in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund two forty-one to the Law Enforcement Trust Fund Expense Account two forty-one, oh-oh-oh, fifty-one thousand and declaring an emergency.
President Protem, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand and twenty-four, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand and twenty-four has been introduced by Councilman Elmore with suspension of the rules and seconded by Ms. Harcourt. Any questions or comments? Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
President Protem, I move to adopt.
Second.
Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand and twenty-four has been moved for adoption by Councilman Elmore and seconded by Councilman Harcourt. Ms. Og, would you please call the roll?
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand and twenty-four has been adopted. We now move to ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand and twenty-four, approving and making an appropriation in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred, one dollars and zero cents from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund Expense Account two forty-one, oh-oh-oh, fifty thousand to the LETF set-side forfeiture expense account two four one, oh-oh-oh, fifty-one thousand and declaring an emergency.
President Protem, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand and twenty-four, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand and twenty-four has been introduced by Ms. Elmore and seconded by Ms. Heck for suspension of the rules. Any questions or comments? Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
President Protem, I move to adopt.
Second.
Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand and twenty-four has been moved for adoption by Ms. Councilman Elmore and seconded by Councilman Heck. Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand and twenty-four has been adopted. Ordinance one hundred, two thousand and twenty-four, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars from unauthorized unapproved monies in this general fund one oh one to the Accured Benefits Reserve Fund five oh five, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars to the Accured Benefit Reserve Expense Account five oh five, oh-oh-oh, fifty-one thousand and declaring an emergency.
President Protem, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one hundred, two thousand and twenty-four, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance one hundred, two thousand and twenty-four has been introduced by Councilman Elmore, seconded by Councilman Smith for suspension of rules. Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
President Protem, I move to adopt.
Second.
Ordinance one hundred, two thousand and twenty-four has been moved for adoption by Councilman Elmore, seconded by Ms. Smith. Any comments or questions? Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Ordinance one hundred, two thousand and twenty-four has been adopted. We now move on to our last piece of legislation, which is Resolution thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. It's resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
President Protem, I'd like to introduce Resolution thirty, two thousand and twenty-four, and move for the suspension of all rules.
A second.
Resolution thirty, two thousand and twenty-four has been introduced by Councilman Elmore, seconded by Councilman Brown for introduction and suspension of rules. Any questions or comments? Ms. Og, please call the roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
President Protem, I move to adopt.
Second.
Resolution thirty, two thousand and twenty-four has been moved for adoption by Councilman Elmore, seconded by Councilman Brown. Ms. Og, would you please call the roll?
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore. Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Resolution thirty twenty twenty-four has been adopted. Next on the agenda is our second poll public. Anyone having anything to say may come forward, have three minutes to speak. Just sign in if you have not done so and state your name. Okay, looks clear. Next is communication decor. Anyone have anything to add?
I do. Okay, um, for, uh, there is youth basketball going on. Um, Parks and Recreation is running youth basketball this year. Uh, there will be open gym on November sixteenth and November twenty-third. Um, November sixteenth, it's four to six. November twenty-third, one to three. Uh, it's for grades kindergarten through sixth grade and the fee is seventy dollars. You can, um, enroll online. You can go to their Facebook page. They have the link there. You can crawl in if you have any additional questions. Um, there's also Winter Wonderland on December sixth at six AM at Kelly Green and Breakfast with Santa, mark your calendars, December fourteenth. Um, I believe is the date. There's more information, come to that and it should be at now. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Slow night. Next on the agenda is poll public and we start with Councilman Me.
Um, thank you, everybody, watching from home. Um, if you happen to tune in late, a lot of the first reading legislation we did discuss at the agenda meeting, so please, um, check that out if you have any questions regarding it. Um, thank you, Mr. Cooper, for coming and speaking. It's always great to see a new face. Also, thank you for volunteering in the community. Um, I love the Halloween walk. I was sad my son had soccer tournament, so I wasn't able to come this year. I love passing candy up and seeing all the cute, um, kids dressed up and some adults dressed up too. Uh, and thank you to everybody that came out to the Fall Forward event. I was there, it was a great event. Um, that happened last Friday and that's all I have. I hope everybody has a good night.
Next, Mr. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, President Pro Tem.
I looked over here, but.
Um, thank you, President Pro Tem. Um, I was also at the Fall Forward event last week. It was good times, always a nice casual, uh, environment. Get to see some friendly faces. Thank you, Mr. Cooper, for coming in. It's nice to see a new face. Thank you to our, our consistent, good friend Nicole. Good to see you. Um, I'm so happy to see you.
Thank you, Councilperson Smith. Next is Councilperson Harcar.
That's me. Um, yeah, I also wanted to congratulate the mayor and the team. I know that he does not do this work on his own, so, um, on the Fall Forward event, that was a really great event. I was excited to, um, be able to see the truck, walk through it. Um, I think that's a wonderful idea that we can take services to the community. Um, so I just really want to thank him and congratulate, you know, all of you on that. Um, I appreciate the commitment to all of our residents and I think that's really important, especially right now. So, um, and Mr. Cooper, it's nice to meet you. Thank you for coming in. Nicole, always here. So, thank you, everybody.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next Councilperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone for joining us and watching from home and of course, all those gathered here in the, uh, chambers tonight. Uh, Mr. Cooper, thank you for coming in and introducing yourself. Uh, nice to see you and, uh, after ten years, I don't, I know that you've been here a while. It's not like you're new to the Whitehall scene, but a pleasure to meet you. Uh, I want to, I want to thank all of the, um, election workers out there here and across America who did all that, uh, work yesterday in this great American right and tradition that we have. I think that was, I think they did such an amazing job. Um, and then finally, I would like to publicly thank Casey Rollins because I had complimented her before the meeting about the stepped-up level of information that has been supplied to the residents and of course, I always talk about that. It's very important and it, uh, it calms down, uh, certain things with lack of information. So, I just wanted to do that publicly and say thank you for that, for the community. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Uh, next is Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Uh, thank you to everyone watching this evening. Uh, thank you to our esteemed guests this evening. Uh, we have officially doubled our, um, usual audience, so that's, it's great to see. Mr. Cooper, thank you for making it out. Um, I would just like to say, I, I do think, uh, it is important for us to be engaged civically, especially on a local level. So it is always great to see people come out and I hope that, um, maybe you will, you both will continue to inspire other people to, uh, come out and remain, uh, involved in that way. Uh, I would also just like to say thank you to everyone that made the, uh, Fall Mingle possible. I was able to make it on the tail end and, uh, it was a great atmosphere and I really appreciated, uh, the concept of the van. Uh, it's my understanding that we're the only community doing that, which I think is really cool. Uh, so I'm just excited to see what comes of that. So, uh, thank you all again and I hope you all have a wonderful rest of your week.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Councilman Brown, uh, Councilman, Councilperson Elmore, please.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. I want to thank our viewers. Um, always good to see you, Michael. Um, thank you, Mr. Cooper, for coming. Uh, involvement is a good thing. Your voice, your vote, uh, your input, and it's just good for our community. Um, I also, um, I sit on the coda board, so we issued forty-seven past and I'm excited. Um, it's the whole Link Us project and I want to thank the voters of Whitehall and Central Ohio. And it'll add bus rapid transit, improve sidewalks and bike trails around Central Ohio. It is actually a historic step forward into introducing a transit system that our region needs uh, to help people get to their jobs, entertainment. Um, it would fund, um, a hundred and fifty miles of sidewalk and bus trails and projects around Central Ohio and, um, and I, I believe that's a good thing. So, we are on the cusp of some really, really good things in Ohio and Central Ohio and I'm just happy about that. The other thing, I did not make the Fall Forward, but, um, I heard it was a really great event. Um, the unveiling of the community truck, um, is going to be a wonderful addition to, um, just some of the cutting-edge things that we are doing. So, very, very happy about that and, um, I don't have anything else. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilperson Elmore. That leaves, last but not least, me. I would like to thank everybody for coming, a whole bunch of you. And for those watching online, I hope you enjoyed this meeting and I too, I did attend the Fall Forward, uh, event and it was presented very well.